Welcome everyone to the first of our town hall meetings for NorCal FTC for the 2021 season. So, welcome everyone. Want to start off first by saying a really grateful thank you to Qualcomm. They have been a supporter of NorCal FTC and of FTC in general for several years. We truly appreciate the additional support they provide for the NorCal FTC program. Without it, we really wouldn't be able to deliver the program for all of you. By way of introduction, there are two, effectively almost all of the NorCal Playing at Learning FTC staff on the call here tonight. I am Mark Edelman. And in the background, Diane France is monitoring questions and we'll chime in as needed as we go. Our email addresses are here on the screen, pretty straightforward. Additionally, you can use the FTC@playingatlearning.org email address and that'll go to all of the FTC staff. So it's an easy way to make sure that you get ahold of one of us as quick as possible. In general, email is the most efficient way to get ahold of us. We have pretty dynamic schedules. So trying to get ahold of us on the phone, you're much more likely to end up in voicemail than actually talking to someone. Sending an email gets to us as fast or faster than the voicemail would. By way of housekeeping, this is a webinar. And so one of the things we do with the webinar is we start everyone off muted. So everyone is unable to speak. And we do ask that you use the question box feature of the GoToWebinar tool to ask any questions that you've got. And we really like to, in this town hall, try to avoid diving into game or game rule questions. There are plenty of other forums to work through those kinds of questions. We really want to focus on what's going on with First Tech Challenge in Northern California and try to get everybody up to speed so that we can really have a good season. If by chance there are questions that get asked that we don't get answered this evening, we will make an effort to try to post answers to those questions on the NorCal FTC website. If you're not familiar with it, that's norcalftc.org. And if you're, again, if you're not familiar with it, you really should become familiar with it. It is sort of a main pivot point for almost everything we do. This session is currently being recorded and we will post a link to the recording on the website and it'll show up in our YouTube channel as well. So we have a handful of things we wanted to try to cover tonight. Just run through this list real quick so we can actually get into the content. But basically, we want to talk some about some of the things we're still facing with dealing with the pandemic. I don't think any of it's going to be a surprise to anybody, but there's still things that we need to talk about. I want to spend a couple of seconds talking about how team registration is currently going, what it's looking like for the season. We're going to spend some time talking about the tournaments that are coming, both the qualifying tournament and the championship tournament. What we're thinking, what we've got planned and what we know and don't know. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about how Dean's List is going to work for Northern California this year. So that everybody is up to speed and on the right page in terms of understanding when you need to nominate your students. We'll talk a few minutes about things that are, might change, right? So we are living in a time of change. So we just want to be very upfront as we work into the season. We are planning to do some discussion meetings, roundtables with some of the coaches and community in coming months. The, we'll throw a little bit of seed for thought out there, you know, a quick discussion. But mostly it's a, hey, heads up, we might be inviting you to join this roundtable. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the costs that we think we're going to be facing, changes in costs from previous seasons. And then some opportunities for people to get more involved and really help out and continue with the program growth. As we continue to grow, it would really, really, really make a lot of difference if all of you could think about being more active and engaged in the community. And then finally, we'll finish up with a session of questions and try to go through as many as we can till we either run out of time or we run out of questions. All right, so pandemic constraints, right? This is, this is the world we're all living in these days. The pandemic is still here. We're all still having to manage working through all of the different constraints and restrictions and accommodations that we have to make. It's just something that we're going to be facing probably through the remainder of the season. So there's a couple of things that we're setting up sort of as NorCal mandates. First is all of our events that involve people getting together in the same place. All in-person events are going to be masks required. There will not be any exceptions. These are not public events. In that sense, they are private events. Masks are going to be a requirement. Additionally, as we start to identify and get agreements with venues to hold events, there are also a whole bunch of other possible constraints we may be facing. So I just listed a handful here. There's a probability that some of the venues are going to limit how many people we can actually bring in. One of the byproducts of that may mean that we don't get to have spectators at some of our tournaments this year. We don't know whether that's going to happen or not. We're looking for trying to manage that as we go forward. Similarly, it may mean that we can't have the whole team show up at the event. There may be a constraint on how many members of your team can attend. There is a possibility that some of the venues will, will only accept attendees that can prove vaccination status. Right? So we're hoping it doesn't come to that, but that is a possibility and we are seeing that in some other programs. Along with that, there may also be a brief health screening, you know, taking a temperature and a survey of questions before you're admitted into the venue. Right? So just trying to be as upfront with what we're thinking we might be facing so that as many people are prepared for what's coming as we can manage. All right, so on to half your news, team registration. Well, so we, I spent a lot of time as we get going on the season trying to look at how team registration is going with an eye towards where is it going to end up, right? So the team registration is not a, everybody registers on the same day. It's a continuing drug out process. Currently, our team registration is going relatively well, better than it did last year. We currently have 132 teams fully paid and registered. As of this point in 2019, we're about the same, right? So that's actually a pretty good sign. We sort of have recovered from the, the limits that were imposed on teams registering last year, and it's about 25% teams more than last year. So it's a pretty good, pretty good status. The one thing that makes us the most nervous is the final count, how many teams they actually get registered has a pretty strong impact on how often the teams get to play, the size of our championship tournament, right? And how many, what percentage of teams get to advance from qualifying tournaments to the championship tournament? So there's a lot of math that goes into that. And so we're trying to track that pretty aggressively because that has a big impact on how we finish planning the rest of the season. All right, qualifying tournaments. So we are starting to get some responses from some of our veteran qualifying tournament hosts. We do have a handful of events that will get published out into, both on the NorCal FTC website as well as on the first website in December. We are looking at our primary season being December through mid-February. Mid-February because we need to sort of shut down in time to be able to have enough time to prep for the NorCal championship. And we are currently talking to a couple of sites about possible events in November. And the slide here says, looking at them being either in-person or remote, currently it looks like we may end up with two in-person events in November. Still working through the details on that. Stay tuned. Then currently, all of the events in December are scheduled as in-person as well. Currently, in terms of our planning, we are working at what we call single field events. So they will be relatively smallish in team capacity, somewhere around 16 teams. We're doing this in a little bit of a conservative sense, trying to make sure that we don't run up against capacity limits, right? It's easier to add teams into a tournament later, expanding it than it is to shrink a tournament. If a venue comes back and says, no, you can't have more than 150 people at the event, right? So we're trying to anticipate that. As we get deeper into the registration and event planning, we're hoping to be able to add a few more of the, what we call two-field tournaments that would support, you know, 28 to 32 teams. But we won't know that for a while. It's still a very foggy landscape ahead of us. Sorry, we really don't have all the information. As far as our regional championship goes, we do need to plan our regional championship to sort of align dovetail with the first championship. So our region feeds into the Houston championship, which is currently scheduled for April 18th to 23rd. And so as a byproduct of that, first has asked us to make sure that our championship doesn't happen any later than the first weekend of March. And so that is our target date currently, the 5th and 6th of March, that's that weekend. We do not have a location for it yet. We are anticipating doing this as a traditional event with in-person gameplay and in-person judging. But that is something that will be determined as we get closer to the event. And the size, again, that is something that will have a pretty strong impact based on how many teams actually get registered this year. Right? So we like to try to have our championship tournament provide somewhere approaching 30 to 35% of the teams advancing. There are some practical limits to size. We, for example, know that there really aren't any venues around that we can use that would support more than about 56 teams. So that would likely be our upper bound on size. Last year, we ran our regional championship at 48 teams with a remote format. So likely somewhere between those two numbers will be what we do for a size for the event. And again, looking currently at the first weekend of March, the 5th, 6th. Like we've done for the last handful of years, we are going to do a Dean's List interview event this year. So there will be a single event where all Dean's List nominees from teams are interviewed by panels of judges, panels of Dean's List interviewers. And they'll go through and they'll talk to everybody in the course of that day. Everything will be done online. We used Zoom to do the interviews this, this most recent season. We're currently targeting the interview event to take place in mid to late February. So it'd be after all the qualifiers are done, but before the NorCal championship. What that means is then the nominations for all of the Dean's List nominees would be due by the 15th of January. So the first policies for nominations is they are due 15th of the month prior to the event taking place. So that's January 15th is the, the date for that. So if you're looking to nominate one or two students from your team, this is an important date. You must get that nomination in before, on or before January 15th. We will be holding a Dean's List workshop with an eye towards helping coaches understand how to make good nominations of students and sort of the importance of recognizing some of the students from your team. So stay tuned for that. Our next workshop day will likely include that workshop in it. So I mentioned we were going to spend a little bit of time talking about what might change. And Diane added the, the tagline that actually makes probably a lot more sense is easier question is what might not change? We really don't have a sense of, you know, I have a magic eight ball here on my desk. I really don't have an intuitive sense to how this is all going to play out. And as hard as it is, we're going to have to figure out how to be sort of responsive to developments as they come. And so, you know, we, we have a thought for how we'd like to see the season go. And we're relying on all of our, our teams that serve as hosts, all of our teams that, that register for our events, all of our volunteers to work with us as we get into the season. We're anticipating that, you know, we're going to start planning traditional events and some of them may end up getting turned into remote events as we get closer to the event date. Right? Depending upon current conditions. We're contemplating adding another kind of event called a hybrid event as an option for helping manage some of this. We really don't know what all might change as we go. So, you know, we appreciate everybody's patience and understanding as we work through this. But, you know, what we tell you today, it may be different in a month, right? So it's, it's not that we, we want to mislead you, but we're working with imperfect information at the time. And, you know, we have to be prepared to adapt to what comes. So we, I've thrown out the words remote, hybrid and traditional. There are three different structures for how we can run events. Our current goal is to try to have as many of our events be traditional as is possible. Traditional events involve in-person robot gameplay alliances, two alliances playing against each other with two robots per alliance and in-person judging. So that's our goal is try to work towards that. There is a version of gameplay called hybrid that straddles somewhere between traditional and remote. In hybrid, it would be traditional style robot gameplay, possibly with some limitations on, on capacity, but remote judging. And then we are reasonably certain that we will at least have some remote events. We've already been in contact with a handful of potential hosts that indicate that they, they think they can host a remote event, but they wouldn't be able to host a traditional event or a hybrid event. And we know that we do have some of our teams that are currently expressing that they're really not feeling comfortable with playing at traditional events, in-person gameplay. And so we, we're trying to make sure that we have at least some. But the catch here is, is it's not going to be a guarantee, right? There, there will be some limit to the, the capacity in our system for remote events this year. And so if you're going to play remote only, it really is important for your team to pay attention to how the registration works and be prepared for when the remote events you're interested in attending are coming up for registration. Right? So the key there is, is be prepared early. Don't wait till the last minute and be prepared to take care of the registration on the date that the registration opens.
Mark, we have a question. Do we expect Alliance teams to go on practice fields before the competition in a traditional or in-person? Will we have practice fields?
So anticipation is, is that traditional and hybrid events both would have sort of the normal equipment sets available for teams. So as an example, a, a single field traditional event would have a single field that is the competition field and there would be a practice field. Right? Exactly what kind of guidances we have for how that practice field gets used, we don't know. Likely there would be some constraints. It likely wouldn't be a free-for-all kind of field. And it would, would likely involve some sort of maybe signing up on a list for a time. You get on the field and then you get off the field and the next team comes on. It likely also maybe would involve limitations in the number of people that can be on the practice field at a time. Right? So there's a lot that we don't know. There's a lot of thoughts we have. But the, the goal would be yes, there, there would be some sort of a practice facility for the teams at both hybrid and remote, hybrid and traditional events. The ability to test your robot as you're making changes between matches is pretty important.
And when do, when do you anticipate registration for qualifying tournaments opening?
Well, so traditionally, when we have a November start date, we try to get the registration open in typically mid, mid-October-ish with the, the current November dates we're looking at, they are towards the end of November. So that gives us a little bit more time to let things settle. But likely it, it would be in the next few weeks, the, the initial phase of turn-up registration would, would open up. And we do open up our, our tournament registration in waves. So it's not all events all at once. It's done that way to sort of give an opportunity for teams that are late in registering as a First Tech Challenge team for the season. Still an opportunity to be able to compete. And then our registration system also is biased towards those who haven't played as much. So when a month's worth of tournaments open up for registration, the first priority is for teams who haven't registered for any tournaments at all yet. They sort of have an opportunity to register and then it'll open up for teams that have registered for at least one prior, right? So that it's, it's kind of a staged system. We are concerned about our ability to have enough capacity for teams to play at our normal supported level, right? We normally try to support teams playing somewhere between two and two and a half times each on average across all of our teams. We, we don't know that we're going to be able to get there this year. So, you know, just again, setting expectations for everyone. It's likely not, it's not very likely that a team is going to get to play three times this year, right? That's the theoretical maximum based on the, what's in the first tech challenge game manuals. It's not very likely going to happen this year. It's possible that one or two teams might have it happen, but it's much more likely that two is going to be the maximum that anybody gets to play. Any other quick questions? If not, I'll keep moving.
Keep going.
Wrong screen, that one. Ah, so one of the things that we're trying to understand as we sort of continue to grow the program here in Northern California is how to manage competitions, right? So there's a lot of different ways that, that competition structures are managed all across the country. And so one of the things we're going to do in the coming months, maybe a year, is engage with members of our community. So we really would like to engage with a rookie team, you know, a medium, medium level veteran team, a long veteran team, high-performing teams, average teams with a goal to try to understand how to manage the event growth and the desire for teams to play frequently, right? And so, you know, there's kind of a, a basic set of problems. We have a sort of a fundamental maximum to the size we can run our championship tournament. So that's going to become harder and harder to get to. Qualifying tournaments, there's a finite number of days available to put tournaments on during a season. And so pretty soon we run out of days. We can put multiple events per day, but that starts to put a different set of loads. So we want to talk through all of these different structures, right? There's alternative gameplay structures, leagues and meets. There's different varieties of leagues. So we want to sort of lay it all out, sort of educate this group, this sort of, not really a steering group, but basically a team representatives, lay it all out, sort of educate you on all the different styles that are out there and available with an eye towards trying to understand how to continue the growth here in NorCal, right? We are one of the largest regions. I believe we might be the largest region to still be doing qualifying tournaments, right? So the goal is get a group of teams together, talk through all the different options and sort of understand what the mood is with an eye towards figuring out how to manage continuing to grow because all signs are that it is going to continue to grow. As we continue to grow, there's several things that are going to become very apparent. Equipment logistics is one of the things that has been sort of my sore point for the last couple of years. I attended 19 tournaments, 17 tournaments last year. That's a lot, including most every weekend that tournaments were happening, I was at two. So just the sheer movement of equipment to support all those events. I can't do it all anymore. The setup and teardown, right? I recently had a knee replaced and I'm learning that that involves some adaptations in how I move. So more people are going to need to be involved as experts in helping with being able to manage setup and teardown, right? Sort of a field manager. As we get more technology connected into what's going on with our events, there's also opportunities to be involved in sort of the backend of things, right? For all of our remote events last year, we had Zoom administrators sitting and helping manage the teams getting appropriately to their Zoom sessions, right? So opportunities for being involved in that sense. And then again, as we move into some of these event types with maybe limited audiences, it still would be nice to engage the public. So the possibility of streaming and/or videographers being needed starts to become more important. But basically, if this program's going to continue to grow, the community needs to step up a little bit and really hope be a part of supporting it, right? Simple truth is, is the community is the one part that can, that scales continuously with team growth. And so we, we really need to tap our community and sort of use that as a way of supporting each other. In terms of event costs, we are anticipating that the costs are going to be a little higher this year. We tried to manage pretty hard to not use paid staff to manage weekend events this last year. It's probably not going to be possible. So that, that puts an extra cost on playing at learning, which needs to be borne by the tournaments. So it's possible, I would say even likely, that there will be some small increase in the costs for the events. Additionally, as we have events, simultaneous events, that's where some of that earlier additional support really starts to come into play, right? Multiple traditional events on the same day requires two sets, three sets, four sets, however many events are going on at the same time to be able to move around. Traditional events plus hybrid or remote events in the, in the weekend requires that equipment logistics plus that IT logistics all in the same weekend, right? So again, that's a tough one. We've really come to the conclusion that it isn't feasible for us to run multiple remote events in a day. So we really aren't looking at concurrent remote events. It is likely that we will support multiple remote events in a weekend, but it would likely mean that one of them is judging on Saturday while the other is going to judge on Sunday. Right? And so that would be how we would likely manage that. We, we did have a few weekends of that this past season. But, you know, just again, in trying to keep everybody aware and prepared, it's likely that the costs are going to be a little bit higher this year. We have not had a chance to sit down and work through it all. Again, some of it depends on how many teams actually register. So it's a little bit of a, a race to the cliff to see which we figure out first, what the event costs are or how many teams we have. So hopefully we'll get it figured out pretty quickly here for everybody. So to give you as much lead time as is needed. With that, that's the last of my sort of prepared material. This is our opportunity for questions, questions, questions. And I threw our email addresses up here again. So, you know, FTC@playingatlearning.org goes to the entire First Tech Challenge staff here at Playing at Learning. And then marquee@playingatlearning.org and Diane@playingatlearning.org. Go to the, each of us individually.
Mark, we do have a question. We're not taking game questions, but do we know when the approximate date is when the forum will open?
So I don't know exactly. I know what they're trying to do. They'd like to have it open like within the next week or so. They're shifting the team side game forum over to a system that's been used by the First Robotics Competition side for several years. And one of the pieces that needs to be in place for that is the ability for the lead coaches for the team to download a code from the team dashboard to be able to access the Q and A system. So the First IT department is having issues currently with finalizing that and making that work. So that is currently what the holdup is. The forum is actually live. And they've enabled those of us who are involved in answering the question. The, they've enabled us to be able to go into the system, but there's nobody that can ask questions currently, right? Because the teams don't have access yet. So I know that's a long way of saying, I don't know what the, the final answer is. I know they'd like to have it open already. Normally, we, they try to have it open two weeks after kickoff. Yeah, but there is a rather impassioned set of discussions going on between the Yeah, but there is a rather impassioned set of discussions going on between the first IT people and the first tech challenge staff and trying to get that resolved.
Do we still need hosts for remote events? Or in-person event?
Very likely. Right? So if you think you've got the space or the resources to be able to host one or the other, please send an email to FTC@playingatlearning.org and let's, let's talk through it and let's figure out what we can or can't do. Right? We need teams to step forward to be hosts fundamentally, right? I used to talk about a basic model. For every team, if we, if we think about a sixteen-team tournament, if, if all of our tournaments are sixteen-team tournaments, if every team wants to play twice, one out of every eight teams needs to be a host, right? It's kind of a pretty straightforward model. It changes a little bit when we do double field tournaments, but it doesn't change it significantly. So, you know, if you're not one of those eight, maybe you should think about either supporting one of those eight or becoming one of those eight.
So Mark, can you talk briefly about what kind of resources are required to be a host?
So I'll talk about the traditional first. So a prototypical traditional tournament has a gymnasium with bleachers. Doesn't need to have bleachers on both sides. One side is sufficient, but so a basketball court with bleachers. And that's the main competition area. Additionally, there needs to be a second space that's large enough for sixteen, six to eight foot tables, one per team for their pit area. So depending upon the size of your gym, some largest gyms are big enough, particularly if there's a curtain that can divide the gym in half, to do all of that in one gymnasium. Right? So our veteran teams might remember, you know, the setup at Sequoia High School in Redwood City or at the Breen High School in Walnut Creek, right? They, they worked with that split gym model. If your campus has multiple gyms, that works out great too. A gym and a cafeteria works, right? Wilcox High School in Santa Clara, they host the competition area and their gym. And they have a relatively large cafeteria that's, that's pretty nearby that serves then as the pits. In addition to those two large spaces, there needs to be a handful of other spaces. There needs to be a judge's deliberation room. So like a teacher's lounge or a library typically works pretty well for those. It's a space big enough and private enough for the judges to be able to come together to have discussions about the teams that they've interviewed in terms of mapping all the awards. There need to be a set of rooms for the judges to use to interview teams. So like, for example, at a sixteen-team tournament, we would typically work with four sets of judges. And that four sets of judges would need four unique rooms to be able to do their interviews. And then finally, we need someplace for the volunteers to be able to eat and for the teams to be able to eat. Some events that's outside, some events that's inside. But there needs to be someplace for, it's, it's a long-ish day. So it needs to be someplace for people to be comfortable, be able to sit down, have a meal and make sure they can keep their energy up. The other side of it is, as a host, you are responsible for recruiting the volunteers. So identifying a group of people to work with you as part of your organizing committee, one of those key roles in that organizing committee is a volunteer coordinator, right? So somebody who manages the volunteers, assigning them to their roles, helping them stay connected with the event. For a remote event, it really is largely about that last piece, the volunteer coordinator, and helping make the award ceremony a little bit more lively. Right? So it's a little easier on the remote event side because you don't need any of the physical facility, but you still do need all roughly the same amount of volunteers and a nice closing ceremony. There is a document that is linked on the main page of the NorCal FTC website that sort of gives a little bit more detailed overview of that same set of information.
I did answer that in a question. So it should be, if you look in the questions section, I put a link to the in-person event. But on the main page, on the very bottom of the main page on the lower right, you'll see a link to a remote and an in-person traditional event for those documents.
Excellent.
And we have a question asking, does the host team advance automatically?
So we are still trying to determine that. So last year, we did not do that with the remote events. Some of that was in recognition of the, the change in workload for the teams. We don't have an answer to that yet. It is something that is not a automatic. It is a region by region decision in terms of how it actually is, is made available by the region.
There's a question asking about a budget provided by Planet Learning to host.
So the, if I was going to take a look at what a team pays for going to a qualifying tournament, that fee is broken into two chunks. There's one chunk that goes to sort of the playing at learning. And that is what keeps our operations running. And that, that is sort of the playing at learning chunk. The larger chunk, roughly about a hundred dollars per registration, we feed forward to the tournament as the budget. So at a traditional sixteen-team tournament, there is basically sixteen hundred dollars for the budget. Playing at Learning takes care of ordering all the trophies. And so that is something we deduct from that. But basically, all of that remaining is left for the tournament to spend. And one of the things we've done with our teams that have nonprofit status, at the end, I can just write a check. Other, if you don't have nonprofit status, I can reimburse receipts, right? So either, either method can be used. So the benefit of the nonprofit status is effectively what you don't spend, you get to keep to use for your team. Whereas it is consistent with the way the funds were granted, basically. And that is only for the traditional events. We don't know what the budget model for supporting hybrid events is. This is, a hybrid event is something that nobody's really tried anywhere in the country yet. So there'll be some budget available for that because there's going to be some expenses for that. But at what level, we don't know.
If a team wants to participate in our discussions about future planning for NorCal, how do they sign up for that?
We don't know yet. We are going to be somewhat selective because we are trying to make sure we have good representation, right? You know, if we just made it a first come, first served to the eager and aggressive, we'd end up with a set of opinions that are all about the uber high performing teams. And they represent a small fraction of our overall team community. And we really want to make sure that the choices we make going forward represent the need, represent and serve the needs of all of our teams, not just the minority, right? So, you know, you're welcome to send a note to us to say, hey, we'd be interested in being involved. But that doesn't mean that necessarily means you're going to get to be involved because we are going to try to be a little bit selective. You know, as an example, we're likely going to include some of our tournament hosts, those teams in part of that. We'll likely try to look at a tournament host that's done a two-field event versus a tournament host that's done a one-field event. So we've got a good sampling on that spectrum. I mentioned rookies and veterans, you know, school-connected teams versus community teams. You know, Bay Area teams versus, you know, Sacramento area teams versus rural teams, right? So we want to make sure that we're really getting a good cross-section. So it will be sort of a constructed group, not just a sort of raise your hand.
Okay, I'll answer this one. We have a question that says, how many teams have expressed interest in remote versus live? We've done a poll both for the kickoff registration for the webinar and for this webinar. And in both cases, roughly eighty percent of the teams have either said that they may be willing to be in person or they are willing to be in person. So it's definitely, I think people are excited to get back in person. Again, it's not a commitment. We are definitely doing this, but certainly that they, they believe that that's where they're headed.
And again, we're trying to get a sort of a pulse on the community. You know, what are people thinking? So when you, when you see those kind of questions, please, please do take the time to answer them because that is some of the information we use in driving our decisions. Right? So when, when a survey comes out, please give us your opinions. Tell us what you think because we're trying to keep everybody connected in the best way we can.
I don't know if we've covered this. It says, is there anywhere where the requirements for being a host of a remote or hybrid tournament are listed?
So in the past, we have used veteran team status as one of the requirements for being a host. So one of the things that we sort of recognize is it's kind of hard to be an organizer of an event if you've never been to one before. So we sort of encourage our rookie teams to really focus in their first year on being a team. And then look at as that, now that they've been a successful team for a year, that's the time to come back and look at, at sort of helping you serve the community. But I don't know that there's necessarily requirements. There, there are event requirements, right? So there are resources that are needed. But, you know, we had a variety of tournament hosts last year for our remote events that had not hosted events previously. We had a handful that had hosted events previously. But again, all of them were veteran teams. So they had at least a sense of how the overall event would flow.
Those are all of the questions that I have that are of this nature. I do have one question about engineering notebook, but that's as a game player judging. I don't know if you want that one tonight.
So the engineering, I can just really sort of throw it out there real quick.
Let me ask you the question. They're asking, what, what's the role of the engineering notebook? Will teams be able to submit their engineering notebooks for judging?
So judging again, this year is the engineering portfolio, not the notebook. But the notebook is still a resource that judges may ask to see or teams may highlight pieces of to the judges. In the remote format, that's a little bit harder to do. But in an in-person format, that's relatively easy to do. So that in, in the ideal sense, the engineering portfolio is sort of the Cliff Notes or the summary, the highlights of your engineering notebook. So the two are really designed to be related in that sense. So my recommendation would be keep the engineering notebook up to date. It's your journal of your team's experiences throughout the season. Your engineering portfolio is the highlights of that that you take to judging with you.
We do have a few more minutes. If anyone has any additional questions, feel free to put them in the question box.
And just as by way of heads up, this is first of several town hall meetings. The others will sort of be a little bit probably more narrow in topic with an eye towards trying to help everybody have successful seasons. Grant opportunities. Everybody wants a grant. Most of the grants that are available for First Tech Challenge teams are centered around rookie teams. And in order to apply for most of the rookie grants through first, you need to have not paid for your team yet. They, they do tend to focus the granting on a significant chunk of it being used to pay for the team's registration. So if you've already paid for your team's registration, you're, you're probably out of luck with respect to those. The other grants are typically tied to particular sponsors and they have their own set of criterias for how those are picked and selected.
What's our deadline for deciding on host teams?
Yeah, so hosting, so I'll just say events, right? We would like to have as many events as possible identified as early as possible. But the absolute deadline would be effectively when the registration for that month opens, right? So we will open up the registration for each month of tournaments in sort of successive waves. So, you know, as an example, we wouldn't want to add another event into January if we've already opened up the January registration, right? So that, that would sort of be the deadlines. We have not picked yet what the, the schedule for registration is yet. But that would be probably the easiest way to look at what deadlines would be. So for example, if you're looking to host an event in January or February, we probably need to know by mid-November or early-December. In particular, the January tournaments, because of where the, the holiday break is, it makes communicating with teams, particularly the school teams, very challenging for the early January tournament hosts. So we really need to get the January registration done relatively early in December to give them enough time to be able to communicate with the teams.
Here's a question on a different topic. Seems like FTC is a big commitment for students. From your observations, what are the average hours per week of FTC commitment from students?
So a lot of that depends upon the kids on the team. So one of my recommendations has always been for the team to sit down and decide what its goals are, right? And so it's, it's, you know, how, how hard are they as a collective group willing to work, right? So that sort of drives the, the overall time commitment. Just sort of anecdotally, the stories I hear, the typical average team meets a couple of times a week for most of the season for a few hours at a session. And it depends a lot on, are they a school team or a community team, right? So school teams might meet after school for an hour to a couple of times a week. A community team might meet only on the weekend at somebody's house, maybe for a longer period, but roughly averaging out the same way. So, you know, four to six hours a week is probably a pretty typical budget. That does tend for most teams to get a little heavier as they get closer to the events they're attending, right? Kids are not necessarily good at planning. And so they always want to squeeze in one more thing, one more thing. So they typically want to work a little harder as they get closer to the events.
Do you have a question about the process for recruiting volunteer referees and judges?
Yeah, that's a good question. Those two groups of volunteers are ones that we really like to put some extra constraints on. So in order to help make teams feel that all decisions made at events are about the communication between the volunteers and those teams at that event, we like to have unaffiliated volunteers for those roles. So unaffiliated means they're not connected to any of the members of the team or to the parents of the team, right? So as an example, you know, a team member's uncle should not be a judge. A team member's parent should not be a judge, right? Your grandparent should not be a judge. And so we really want to make sure that there's a disconnect there so that the teams have confidence that the communication is very clear and very clean. For our referees, the head referee has the same criteria. We really want the head referee to not have any relationship with a team. It's not just about the teams at the event, but it's teams in general. The rest of the referee crew at the event were willing to tolerate a little bit of affiliation, mostly because they're all working in, in public and they have a final say, the head referee that isn't affiliated. But in terms of the process, you're really looking to try to find people that are good at talking to children, to students, right? So the people who are able to have a lively, friendly conversation and provides that good feedback that helps validate the kids' experiences as they're going through First Tech Challenge. So it's not easy, but as, you know, it's an ask everyone you can think of. So it's not easy, but as, you know, it's a, an ask everyone you can think of. The Oregon partner was notorious for finding very creative sources for volunteers. I think one year she had a, had a conversation with the hot dog cart vendor outside of her office building and ended up recruiting them to come be a judge or a referee at one of their events. You never know where that conversation's going to come up, but it's recruit, recruit, recruit.
We have one other question that's asking a little bit of, can you talk a little bit about formal events versus scrimmage or practice events?
So there are what are called official events. So those are events that are coordinated through the program delivery partner. In this case, in Northern California, that's Playing at Learning. So we coordinate, manage and effectively authorize those events. They are published in the first system and teams register for them following our guidelines and first guidelines. Those events in our region are of two types, qualifying tournaments and a regional championship tournament. Our qualifying tournaments advance some fraction of the teams at that qualifying tournament to attend the regional championship. A scrimmage is, well, I guess I'll back up one more time. Those official events all involve both the full suite of robot gameplay and the full suite of judging. Right? So there are judges that interview the teams to assign awards as appropriate to those teams and the full gameplay is done following the full set of rules. Scrimmages and practice events typically don't end up involving the judging side and they're really about just the robot gameplay side. And so, you know, they're, they're more informal. The, they sometimes will have some of the referees come be referees for them. But a lot of times they'll just be self-officiated by coaches and mentors from the teams. And they're just opportunities for teams to get together and practice in a more match-like environment. Traditional events, when you play, you play 2V2. So if you don't have other teams in your normal practice environment, it can be really hard to understand what the impact of those other robots on the playing field is on your thoughts and strategies and implementations. And so scrimmage gives you a good way to understand more about your own solution.
Are you considering having a scrimmage this year, Mark?
I don't know. So I have conflicts at the end of October with my, my youngest deciding to make me a grandparent. So I may be a little bit distracted at the end of October. The, some of it, a lot of it depends upon venues. So I know last year we ran a remote scrimmage as a way both of helping everybody understand how the remote event process worked, but also as an opportunity to work with the sort of FTC cloud-based scoring system. So it's highly likely we'll set one of those up again. And likely what we do is set it up so that, you know, during a certain week, everybody in NorCal is signed into that event and you can all go play with and try out the live scoring system and understand how it works. Right? So the, the goal would be to sort of get everybody flushed through working with that. So let's go comfortable with it. There are some peculiarities to the way you need to use it. And so using it first in a, a casual mode helps make it easier to use when it's more formalized and, and actually important.
I think those are all of our questions.
Fabulous. So we appreciate everybody's time this evening. Been a great set of questions and hopefully it's provided some good information for everybody. And you know, the two pieces of advice, if you're not already on the NorCal FTC mailing list, the Google group, make sure you are and you can have as many members of your team and parents be on as you wish. Google doesn't charge us any extra for adding a few more emails going out. When you are signing up, make sure that, that you sign up and double check that it's sending you emails. Right? I think sometimes the default for it is no emails, only read them on the web. So you want to make sure that it is sending you emails. The other is, you know, start early, play early. Historically, most of the teams that end up at our championship tournament play in the early tournaments. Whether they advance from those early tournaments or not is a mixed bag. But you know, sort of the play early, play often model tends to generate most of the teams at our, at our championships. Well, the questions have died down. We can go ahead and stop the recording. And we call it an evening and we appreciate everybody's time and we look forward to talking to you again soon. And hopefully we get to see some of you at events soon. Good night, everyone.